Good evening. This is the April 23rd, 2019 meeting of the East Long Meadow Town Council. We'll begin our meeting now with a pledge of allegiance followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in the visible with liberty and justice for all.
And we ask that you keep our first responders and our servicemen and women around the globe in your thoughts this evening. We have a busy agenda this evening, and I'll start by mentioning that pursuant to Mass General Law, this meeting is being audio and videotaped. And if there's anybody in the audience who is taping, we ask that you please identify yourselves. I don't see anybody at the present time. We deliberately scheduled this meeting an hour in advance of our normal time so that we can give due time and attention to the work, the ongoing work for the preparation of our annual budget. And so that said, because the budget process is far down the list, I would entertain a motion to go out of order and move to 9B, 1. Excuse me, B2.
Second it, but I'm going to modify the motion that, and then after we return to our regular schedule, unless it runs into when our public hearings are starting, and then we will start our public hearings.
Oh, so that's a wraparound for everything.
Yeah.
Perfect. One size fits all.
As amended.
Motion has been made and amended and seconded. Hearing, seeing no discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Their motion carries five to zero. So we move now to financial matters, B2, and the opportunity for our financial oversight committee to give us a status report on their work thus far. And with us this evening, we have two folks who will represent the committee, Christine Sagné and Mr. James Broderick.
Good to be here. I can say for Jim and I, I think we're both honored to be of service to the town once again. We've had the experience of the old appropriations committee and capital planning committee and on and on. So what initially, what I want to tell you is that we've had three meetings. We have convened. We haven't, because we're still waiting for more in-depth information, we're working off of the summary of the draft budget, which is that the general government and the capital projects for both the general fund and the enterprise funds. So once we're eagerly awaiting the town manager's finalized budget, as I'm sure you are, so when that is available, I've been invited to sit down with Denise and the finance director, perhaps sometime next week, so that we understand what the committee needs and what their perspective is of our function. So we're looking forward to that. We look forward to pursuing ideas in the budget, and it's our intent to provide you with a comprehensive analysis and a fiscally sound recommendation. That's all we have for this evening.
Short and sweet. Any questions? Just for the record and for the public's awareness, the financial oversight committee is made up of Mr. Broderick and Ms. Sagné, as well as councilors O'Connor and Kane, and originally councillor Manley, who has, because of some commitments, decided to forego his participation in the meeting. But we have four very capable folks who are committed to working diligently to get the numbers to be something that the council can react to and, in the interest of all the residents, to do the very best we can for the money that we need to operate on. So again, thank you for the three meetings that you've invested time in thus far, and we're anxiously awaiting a recommendation when you get to that point.
We'll do our best.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So since we have the one-size-fits-all opportunity to move around the budget as we need to, although I think that may be the only time we have to go out of order unless we get to our hearings at 6:30 without finishing, we'll move next to, in the agenda, to public comments. And the first...
I think we're ready for that.
Are you not ready for that?
So my thought is, while we have the superintendent and the finance director, we could take, probably take that out of order as well, because, you know, it's early for the public participants to...
Yep. That's fair. Is council okay with that?
Yeah, I think there was some confusion with, we didn't know when we'd be done with the budget stuff, so we were telling them to come around 6 o'clock.
Okay.
But I think we'll be there earlier than that.
Fair enough. Okay, so Mr. Smith, you don't want to wait three hours?
It always happens to be part of whatever is the best for the...
I think we're still okay, because I think your original motion was to move into the financial matters.
Moving in.
To reel back, so it's still in that same umbrella.
That's what it is. So the next item then is under financial manners, the appropriation of $3,188,859 for the purpose of paying cost of the capital project to replace the roof at Meadowbrook Elementary School. And again, with us is Superintendent Smith and our finance director, Sarah Minard.
Thank you for the opportunity to be here once again. I think the vote language from the MSBA has been passed out, but just to give people sort of a quick history, we began this process for the roof, if you remember, back in February of 2018. Both the school committee and the town council had voted to submit a statement of interest to the accelerated repair program for the roof. We, at that point, were into a project for windows and doors. Then in the spring of 2018, we were alerted by the Mass School Building Authority that we were being invited in to the accelerated repair program for the roof at Meadowbrook. In the fall, I had come before you, I believe, in October, and we appropriated our, at that point, asked for, and the town council voted to appropriate money for schematic design. During that process, not only did they produce, I brought some show and tell, the documents that they'll use for the bid process, but they also then estimate through the Mass School Building Authority process, the, what they feel the possible whole cost will be for the project. And so that was voted on April 12th, just before the April break. So tonight, coming before you, to ask for the appropriation of $3,188,859, which is the whole project cost as estimated through their process. One side note, I don't know if the MSBA officials would say this, but having gone through the process with windows and doors, they are very conservative, and generally the bids come in well under that cost. However, should we reach that cost, we would have a estimated facilities grant of about $1,285,400 with a contingency of about another $140,000 for unforeseen circumstances.
Which would mean that the net obligation of the town, give or take, would be $2 million down?
Correct.
If, once it nets out?
Right.
And Sarah, I assume this is an amount that you'll look to bond?
Yes. Yes. And as previously discussed, this would be part of the FY '19. So yes, we would be bonding for it. We did put into the budget a contingency for bonding costs at the time of last year's budget, so we do have that in there. I had done an estimate that time for the FY '20 budget for it. Now that we have an actual final number that's been approved, I've gone forward with the financial advisor and done an amortization schedule, should the maximum amount need to be borrowed, so that then I can adjust our FY '20 budget for the exact amount now, since before it was just a placeholder amount. And a lot will depend on the, where we go with FY '20 budget. If we do choose to have items in there that we will bond, then we will most likely do a short-term note for this in order to bond all of the projects together, because we're going to get a better rate to bond multiple projects. But if the council chooses not to approve of any bonding for FY '20, then yes, we would bond this one by itself now.
Got you.
Does that make sense to everybody?
Yes, it does. Any questions from the council?
Yeah, I have a question. Sarah?
Yes.
The debt service on this, you've kind of estimated what that's going to be. Can you share that with us?
Sure. So what exactly do you want to know?
What the amount's going to be.
The total? Yeah, give me one. So if we bond June 1st, 2019, it would be a 30-year amortization table with ultimately repaying back principal of $1.9 million at an interest rate of 3.750 percent, with interest therefore over the life of it of $1,296,937.50, therefore giving it a total cost of $3,196,937.50. In the year, the June 30th of 2020, which would be the first payment, that would be $106,250, which includes principal and interest.
That include any fees that are assessed usually during the first year?
No. No, that, this is what would cost us in FY '20. The bonding cost for right now, trying to remember what my paper said. I want to say around $10,000 total, once you do everything, which is why it also makes sense to do a bigger group, because then it's really not that much more to add. It's just that initial amount that's expensive.
Okay. A question probably for Gordon, if I may. I was looking through the five-year capital plan that was submitted by the DPW and the school committee jointly, I believe. And then there it states that there's a project scheduled for next year for HVAC units for that same school roof.
Probably that's for the modular units?
No, it says Meadowbrook School Roof, and it talks about HVAC units replacements of $1,021,981, I think it was.
Okay.
So my question is, are we putting, should we possibly look at either doing that first before we do the roof?
Right.
We've had some experience with roofs in the past, having managed some facilities that did that. And if we're repairing a roof and then putting these units on top, which weigh tons, and rebuilding platforms, we're going to damage the roof.
So I don't know of that specific project. The only HVAC system we've discussed is the current modular renovation that, right now, is in process to go out to bid, and it was approved last year.
Yeah, this one says Meadowbrook Rooftop Air Conditioner Units, $1,021,981 scheduled for 2021 fiscal year.
Okay.
So I would hate to see us put a new roof on it and then go up there and damage it, putting in new HVAC.
So you're talking about something that's out that wasn't presented yet.
Right. It's the five-year plan. It's projected.
That's a good point.
Yeah, that's a, it's a great point.
We'd have to ask Bruce, I think.
Right. What we would probably do, not even probably, what we will definitely do is reevaluate the five-year plan now that this roof is coming into existence.
I would think there probably are already units up there, so it may be a matter of replacing units.
My guess is that the units that exist right now, it's not a guess, actually, the rooftop units that exist are on the old modulators, the kindergarten wing, and the pre-K wing. This roofing project wouldn't impact those units. The probably original capital project was something that came out of the facility study when that was done for all five schools back in 2013. And so if you were to go back into that facility study, they estimated a cost for every school to go into rooftop unit air conditioning, and I think Meadowbrook has just continued that along. If you were to look at past five-year capital plans, you'll probably see that continuing to bump out, so.
If it's on the plan, we make the assumption that it's needed to be replaced, there's a need to replace it, so.
Well, currently, there are not rooftop units for the main part of the building. Right now, you have window units, and so the idea was you're more efficient with rooftop units. Correct. But we would certainly have to reevaluate that, given that you're going to be putting on a new roof, hopefully within six months.
That's my concern, yeah. So it's just a question, I guess, maybe a discussion with Bruce, so.
Right. Yeah.
Point well taken.
No, it's a, it's a great, great point, that we would need to look at that whole five-year capital plan concerning Meadowbrook now that has new windows and doors and will have a new roof.
Yeah, those rubber membranes are great on the roof, but just walking out of the building...
As soon as you start penetrating, yeah.
Not for walking and poking.
No.
Yeah.
One other piece to that, too, we were talking about, in case we had to modify for new units being installed, then they would definitely be cutting the roof, roof open, because the support mechanisms off the trusses would be in a different location, so there'd be a lot of changes that would have to be done to the roof. So until the units were specked, you'd want to have them specked and know just how, what kind of changes you'd make. But I guess we need to figure out first, are we talking about replacing the units on that portion of the building before we...
So the, this project is covering the original portion of the building?
The original footprint.
So you're not replacing or removing, there are no rooftop units?
Got it.
For that portion of the building?
Right, during the window. It's just direct.
Right. Your rooftop units now are on kindergarten wing, pre-K wing, and the old modulars.
So this is a new installation, but nonetheless, it's still on a new roof, which we should all have to concern about.
Right.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Which would mean that we would need to revise and look at that plan as we go out and continue down. No, it's an excellent point.
For those who don't know, we're not doing the other portions of the roof because they didn't meet the age requirements for the MSBA project.
We did leave the kindergarten wing in as an alternate, with the hope that bids come in well under and make a decision at that time, given that the...
Included if there was...
Well, the reasoning, absolutely. The reasoning behind it was that the kindergarten wing is PVC, and we want to go with the EPDM product. The PVC, when it was purchased, when that wing was put on, had a 15-year warranty, so the architects recommended, since we're over those 15 years now, and they were hoping that the MSBA would waive that. However, the MSBA's threshold is now 25 years for a roof. So it is in there as an alternate, and we'll have to see how bids come back in.
Okay. Another question?
Certainly.
So in your response and your email to us, it says a possible grant? Possible?
They voted on...
Those words scare me.
Yeah.
Are you on possible?
The MSBA protects themselves in many different ways. As long as we follow their prescribed steps, this is one of those prescribed steps, the grant then is awarded. So they voted on that contingent upon the town appropriating the full amount of the whole project and contingent upon our process that we follow now, accounting for the project as we go forward.
Okay. So that $1,285,400 is, was voted on and passed contingent on us following the practice?
Right. So this step is, the first step after the MSBA board votes, then the next step is that we would work on a project funding agreement with the MSBA, which would solidify that funding. Almost concurrently, we'd also be finishing off these documents to get it out to bid.
Okay. So that's, this is our best and worst-case scenario?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Correct.
Good.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the council? Seeing and hearing none, I will entertain a motion to go forward with this appropriation.
I'll make a motion to appropriate $3,188,859 for the purposes of paying cost of the capital project to replace the roof at Meadowbrook Elementary School.
Motion's been made and seconded?
I'm sorry, you have to read the whole thing.
We have to read that.
Sorry.
We have a truncated version.
I'm sorry. I have a full version, if you like.
You have it here. You have to read the full story. Okay.
Apologize.
I move that the town of East Long Meadow appropriate the amount of $3,188,859 for the purpose of paying cost of the capital project to replace the roof at Meadowbrook Elementary School at 607 Parker Street, East Long Meadow, Mass, including the payment of all costs incidental or related thereto. Which purpose, which purposed repair project would materially extend the useful life of the school and preserve an asset that otherwise is capable of supporting the required educational program, and for which the town of East Long Meadow may be eligible for a grant from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, an SBA. Said amount to be expended under the direction of the East Long Meadow School Committee. To meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the town manager, is authorized to borrow said amount under Mass General Law, Chapter 44, or pursuant to any other enabling authority. The town of East Long Meadow acknowledges that the MSBA's grant program is a non-entitlement discretionary program based on need, as determined by the MSBA. And any project cost the town of East Long Meadow incurs in excess of any grant approved by and received from the MSBA shall be the sole responsibility of the town of East Long Meadow. Provided further, that any grant that the town of East Long Meadow may receive from the MSBA for the project shall not exceed the lesser of one, 55 percent, of eligible approved project costs as determined by the MSBA, or two, the total maximum grant amount determined by the MSBA, and that the amount of borrowing authorized pursuant to this vote shall be reduced by any grant amount set forth in the project funding agreement that may be executed between the town of East Long Meadow and the MSBA. Any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any premium applied to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of cost approved by this vote in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20 of the general laws, thereby reducing the amount authorized to the borrower to pay such cost by a like amount.
That motion's been made. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
I have a question. In the last portion of that, Sarah, this is something that we talked about, I believe, many months ago in the budget process, where we were talking about using the payment of the cost of issuance and applying it towards the payment. Can you please describe that for me again, how that worked?
So it's, when we go to bond, if we get a bond premium, then we are able to apply that premium to reduce the total amount that we borrow. So rather than borrow the full amount plus get a premium to then spend, we'll just reduce the whole amount, thereby saving interest and making our payments better.
Right. And if that occurs, the total balance on the monies that we appropriate, any leftovers will be returned to the funds. How's that work?
You mean if, so what will happen is the project will go forward, let's say that for simplicity sake, it's even $3 million, okay?
Yeah.
So we will only borrow up to the total amount of that project. We won't borrow more than that. So at the time of when, when we have to make the decision whether to bond in June, we will know what the town council has approved for fiscal '20 as to whether we want a short-term note or not. So a short-term note, we would borrow enough to cover the cost of the project that we received, but not the full amount, and then we will bond after the fact. So we won't have extra that we didn't use. If we did, we'd have up to two years in order to use it before we'd be subject to arbitrage penalties, and I don't like to pay penalties, so I will not be doing that. But if that such thing came up, then, then I would, of course, notify the council, but that's not how we typically borrow.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes, it makes sense to me.
Okay. Awesome.
To the extent that I can grasp that. Bonding is a complex...
Yes.
...topic. Any other discussion before we vote? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. And this motion carries five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck with it.
Thank you.
We're right at 6:30 now.
About 5:30.
I guess time's not flying quite as quick as I thought.
Not flying like that. Okay. We can move back now to the top of our agenda, and do we have the folks here that had asked to speak? All right. Then until that occurs, we'll pass public comments and address that whole topic in a minute and go to, I'm going to also...
Should we go to five?
Hmm?
Should we go to five?
We'll go to five. I'm skipping council comments in the event that there might be a response to whatever these other two speakers might have to say. So that said, town managers' report.
Okay. I have a very brief report tonight, as I've not been in the office as much in the last week. And also, if I end up having a cough and jag or something, I'll quietly leave and not disrupt the meeting any further, but it's not disinterest. It's a polite way to just, you know, stay away. On April 11th, I attended a dinner recognizing the many volunteers that provide support to the council on aging. It was a great evening. And if you're in a, an environment where it's a lot of seniors, they want to have dinner, they want to play the little games, and then by 7:30, you're out the door. I was home in no time, so it was a great evening. It's amazing how many people give of their time and energy to this community. Thank you to them all. I initiated Friday afternoon meet with the town manager at the suggestion of a town resident, and wanted to report that they have been a great success. In the three months since I began the Friday afternoon visits, I've had 12 residents come in for a variety of reasons. Some have come in just to get to know the town manager. Others have specific topics. Standing water has been a big one this spring, for sure. And what I'll do is ask them if they would mind if I asked the public works person, or Tom Christensen, or Bruce, whichever is around and familiar with the neighborhood, comes to speak. Town road conditions, the fields, certainly playing fields, has been comments on trash and recycling, and even pot-belly pigs that we're all a little familiar with. Thank you to Pat Henry for the suggestion. It was a really good one. It's helped the interaction. Emergency Communications Director Scott Burns sent a letter to the Hamden Selectmen and town administrators, introducing himself to them and letting them know that East Long Meadow would be willing to discuss a shared dispatch center now that ours is up and running. It was very low-key, just kind of opening the door in case that's something that they might be interested in at some point. Certainly, I would be letting you all know if this goes anywhere. Certainly, I would be letting you all know if this goes anywhere. The Alliance First Annual Spring Fishing Derby last weekend was also a great success. It was great to see all the children having a great time, and adults that were with them sharing what appeared to be a love of a sport. We saw kids that were, fish were flying out of their hands, flopping. I had some that fell on my feet. It was like, ew, I'm not a fisherman. And some little guys with the fishing habs with all the, you know, flies or whatever they're called on them. It was, it was a great event. A little muddy. It was a little wet and soggy. The 125th and the Alliance Club did an amazing job putting it together. There were lots of volunteers. There was coffee and some kind of breakfast stuff there. The 125th committee was there to sell the ornaments, and while I was there representing our office for selling the ornaments. The mugs are in if anybody wants one. The coins were there, they're in. We're still waiting for the, oh, and the t-shirts were there that day, and we're still waiting for the note cards. We have a sample one. We're waiting for them. So we have displays in our office, but it was a nice kickoff and a very positive event. It was a fun, fun thing to go see. The reception for the library trustee that retired, Virginia Robbins, after 40 years of service to the library, was very well-attended, and there were such nice things said about her. I guess she's a really good baker. Members of the library board, past and present library directors, along with the town clerk who thanked Ms. Robbins for her service during election time. So it was, it was a nice event to go to, and she seemed very grateful. The Easter egg hunt scheduled for the 20th was rescheduled for this Saturday due to last Saturday's rainy weather. It'll be held at Heritage Park from 10 to 12:30. Again, as I stated, I think to you all, I likely will be working from home a lot, just to not overdo, which is the caution that my doctor's saying, just be a good patient. So I'm available at any time. This phone is always on, but I probably won't be in the office as much as usual. That's all I have. Thank you. Denise Benard.
Thank you.
Questions from the council? Are you a patient, patient?
No.
No.
Oh, I'm not.
Okay.
Thanks for talking it out.
Do we have our folks from the, oh, we don't, okay, then we'll back up to item three on our agenda, public comments. The first will be Ms. Julie Ryan regarding the collaborative discussions between the DPW and Recreation Department as it relates to the town field conditions. Welcome, Julie.
Thank you.
Will you just for the record state your name and address?
Sure. Julie Ryan, 288 Summers Road.
Okay.
So the last time we were here, Chad Rule spoke a bit on our fields, and since then we have formed a subcommittee, which involves not only residents, but also the rec department and the DPW. And in just a few short weeks, we have made quite a bit of headway. We've had some meetings, we've gotten out and done some legwork, and we are feeling very positive that with the continuance of this subcommittee and the support of our residents and the DPW and the rec department and the town council, that we could make some, some really big headway. There are small issues that we are already getting underway, but then there's, of course, some larger issues that's going to take some more time and some money. It was interesting this morning, having my coffee, I was on the Facebook forum, and a woman posted a picture of the town rotary, the green. There's, the flowers are being put in, and this woman had a very negative comment about it. And I think that the consensus is people are getting upset. Our fields are not in good condition, our children don't feel supported. And I think that this committee is going to be able to educate the town, educate our residents on the fact that we are doing the work. We are trying to make this a positive. We are all working together now. This committee has made it so that there is open communication with the DPW, and they're not the bad guys. We want to create a positive here. We want to figure out how everyone can help everybody. We have put together some things, and we are asking for $25,000 to go towards the DPW so that they can hire some extra help. We need more bodies out there to prep these fields before games, to properly maintain them after games, to make it easier throughout the year. We are also asking for an additional $20,000 to go towards fertilizations that we can outsource. Yet again, something that is going to alleviate the DPW and be able to, in larger picture, make everything easier for everybody. That was good for three minutes. Was I under?
We didn't talk.
I had ten seconds left, yeah, right?
That guideline is simply a guideline.
Right.
We would never blow the whistle and cut someone off.
I just think that there is so much that we can do with, with everybody communicating better and everybody having their hand in and helping. These kids, they're our future. We all know that, right? And they want to feel supported. You know, I'm a coach, I'm a mother, I see it on all aspects, and we've got these parents who are working tirelessly for the money for these kids, to register them for sports, for all their equipment. We've got these kids who are maintaining great grades in school, who are showing up to practices. We've got coaches who are spending their volunteering time and their hearts on these fields, and I think that they need to see that the town has got just as much heart, you know? And I think by supporting us in these things and all the work that we're doing, is showing the parents and showing the kids that there's, there's support and there's heart. And I think that that's just what everyone's having a hard time seeing right now. And I would like to be able to, myself and all the committee, be able to turn it into a positive and show these people that we can stop and enjoy the flowers at the rotary because everything's being taken care of. Our kids are supported and appreciated just as much as everything else. So $45,000 will help.
Okay. Well, thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Just as a reminder to our viewing audience, that public are allowed to comment, and it's not an opportunity for discussion, but if the council has discussion or questions.
Question, fine.
Oh, sorry.
Not as clean as I used to be.
It can happen under council comments. So Ms. Ryan, again, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Our next registered speaker is Don Mackey regarding the open meeting law.
So I'm here sort of wearing two hats as a, as a town resident and as the LCAT director.
Mr. Mackey, I need to stop you, Mr. Anderson reminded me, just for the record. Everyone knows you, but we need to meet in Anderson.
Oh, Don Mackey, 12 Colony Drive. Thank you. So it may be more appropriate for this conversation to take place with the council president and the town manager. I have some concerns regarding the meeting held on Friday of the Financial Oversight Committee that I had an employee expected to tape and was asked not to tape it. So as a resident, as somebody who has followed town government and am pretty familiar with town government, there are two immediate concerns there that I think just need to be raised because the open meeting law and the charter have provisions in them that are there to be raised in instances where there may be a lack of clarity or a lack of sometimes the best intentions and the best objectives of public good don't always necessarily line up. And we have documents and charters and rules to give us a framework to navigate those conflicts. So the public meeting law, the open meeting law, Chapter 30A, Section 20F, says, "After notifying the chair of the public body, any person may make a video or audio recording of an open session of a meeting of a public body, or may transmit the meeting through any medium, subject to reasonable requirements of the chair as to the number, placement, and operation of equipment used, so as not to interfere with the conduct of the meeting. At the beginning of the meeting, the chair shall inform other attendees of any recording." There is no provision of the open meeting law that gives discretion to the chair of any public body to prohibit for any other reason than the disruptive presence of that equipment that that meeting not be taped. The second
I'm sorry. Could you just read that citation again for MGO?
Yeah. So it's 30A, which is the overall chapter. The open meeting law starts in Section 18, but this is Section 20, paragraph F. "After notifying the chair of the public body, any person may make a video or audio recording of an open session of a meeting of a public body, or may transmit the meeting through any medium, subject to reasonable requirements of the chair as to the number, placement, and operation of equipment used, so as not to interfere with the conduct of the meeting. At the beginning of the meeting, the chair shall inform other attendees of any recordings," which is where the provision at the beginning of the meeting where we ask if anybody's recording me, that's where that comes from. So I think that's important. Essentially, the basis of my job has been, for the past 10 years, to provide access to the public of what goes on in public bodies. We have not videotaped, obviously, every meeting of every public body. Under the old form of government, there was a bylaw that was established that required LCAT, vote of the town, to record the elected executive boards. We did that. There were many occasions when we were asked by various other boards or department heads to record meetings of appointed boards because there was a topic of particular interest that seemed to be in the public interest, and on most occasions, we tried to accommodate that. So I think it's, I guess this is now my interpretation, and again, if it's inappropriate that I'm talking this way as a department head, this is sort of town business. This is not resident business, so I don't want to transgress here. But my assumption, my approach in the 10 years that I have been here, has been that any member of the public, anyone, is allowed, under the open meeting law, to attend an open meeting and to record that meeting. And that therefore applies to LCAT, and any determination as to which meetings get recorded and don't get recorded is irrelevant to that particular issue. So we did record the two prior meetings of the Financial Oversight Committee. The question was raised, do you don't record other meetings of other subcommittees? And that is true. The, a year ago, there was another, wasn't called the Financial Oversight Committee, it was a budget subcommittee. I attended a meeting of that subcommittee in a library conference room. There was a long discussion. I did not record that meeting. I would have recorded that meeting. I felt, as I was sitting at that meeting, that it ought to be recorded, that the public ought to be, participate in this conversation, but I continue to be respectful of the effort that everyone here makes to make this thing work. This is not questioning that at all. It is really just reminding us that we have rules and procedures to adhere to when trying to navigate that gets complicated, and it gets complicated. And I understand if there are issues that would be helpful to the members of that committee to discuss, that may or may not be easy to discuss in the public setting, that's going to be broadcast all over town, I understand that, but that does not exempt them from the requirements of the open meeting law. And I just, it is my responsibility to remind the council of that and to remind the town manager of that and to remind the residents of that. So that's really all I have to say. I think moving forward, the expectation, we have, we've, with the change in form of town government, we no longer operate under that bylaw. That bylaw has, I believe, changed when the bylaw review committee, I submitted changes to that bylaw, so that everything that we do is, at a minimum, at the discretion of the town manager, because I, I report to the town manager. My employees report to the town manager. So, but I believe, I, we have, I guess this gets tricky. I do not, I do not need permission, I don't believe, and I guess this is something that we could take up, I don't believe we need the permission of the town manager, or certainly the permission of a chairman of any appointed or elected body under the open meeting law, to determine whether or not we record a given meeting. And, and I just, this is not about the particular meeting that we didn't record, it's not about the subject matter that was discussed there, although I think the budget is probably the primary subject of public interest. And after the meeting last year that did not get recorded, all of you know, a very diligent, interested, active resident who attended many, many, many meetings and has since passed away, who hammered me on a phone for the next week about why that meeting wasn't recorded, and I didn't have a good answer for it. So I'm just here to represent the viewers, the taxpayers, who I believe have the right to see the discussions and the reasoning and the analyses that go into any recommendation that they are then going to make to the council. And if there is a reason under the open meeting law for that not to be recorded, it's still responsible to record the opening of the public meeting, the reasoning, the exemption that applies, the vote to go into executive session under that exemption, and then any return to any business that isn't covered under the exemption. So that's what I have. Thank you very much.
Mr. Florence, no other public comment. Okay, moving on to agenda item four, council comments. Anybody?
Sure. Just wanted to thank Julie for coming forward. It's been her and many other of the residents taking the time out of their busy schedules. They're coaching, their parents, they're working, they've got a lot of stuff going on, as well as Donna and her group from the rec department and Bruce and his group from the DPW. I've been at this for essentially, this will be season 16, where I've been trying to fight the fight with multiple DPW directors and rec directors and trying to get people to come together. So it's time. There's a lot of, for the first time I've ever been doing this, there's a collaborative effort of everybody putting, you know, their hat in the ring and trying to help. And I know we're a little late to the game in terms of budget requests, but we really worked through a lot of different things, and many of the suggestions and things that we're adopting are not going to require us to ask for more money. But if we don't appropriate something for FY '20, then nothing is going to accomplish until July of the following budget cycle, and essentially, you're talking 14, 15 months. You're not, so, so what we're proposing to do, and this is, this week is a perfect example. It rained horrifically yesterday. There's no way Bruce can put people on the fields with equipment to rebuild anything, and we're calling for more rain. and we're calling for more rain later in the week. So when, when we all sat down together and said, what is the most, you know, critical ask, and it's getting more bodies available during the peak season times, which is spring and fall, right? He's already has, you know, summer help, which is great, but those two critical seasons where we have the most kids and residents on the field, we really need, you know, we're not asking for full-time, benefit-eligible people, we're asking for part-time people to help with the workload, because when it is sunny and dry out, we need more bodies to do the work quicker, you know, to help improve safety, and ultimately, to help improve field conditions overall. We have many other great initiatives, like I said, that we're putting in the works with the help of the DPW and the REC department, and Denise, and we're really excited about those things, and at some point, we'll come back and talk to you about them. But again, the two that actually cost money that we think we can make an impact on in FY, you know, '20 budget season, was also to address the issue of how we, you know, fertilize the field, and potentially looking to outsource that. So, so we are asking for a total of $45,000, but we think it's integral to finally addressing this. We have all the right people at the table, all trying to work in the collaborative effort. We just need a little bit of funds, you know, so somehow, some way, if we can find a way to work that into the budget, we think we can make an impact now. As I said before, and Julie alluded to, there's a lot of disgruntled, angry people, and I understand where they're coming from, because I was on that side of the fence, and I didn't really understand the full picture. So we're trying to educate people, understand what is happening, how we're moving forward with some of these initiatives, and I think we've made more progress in one month than I honestly made in the past 15 years. So, you know, that being said, I don't know if you guys have any specific questions, but, you know, we're not a formal body, we're just people getting together as our schedules permit, and we've got REC and DPW that are donating their time, and whether it's off-hours or whatever the case, they're answering our questions, and they're helping guide us. So, super excited, and we could really use a little help from you guys.
So as a follow-up, yeah, in looking for some clarification, the budget submission process has already occurred, as you said, your timing is unfortunate. My question would be to the manager, since a funding request has to be attached to a department, where would you envision this request coming from?
That was my note here.
Okay. I have extra vision.
I guess you do. I guess it would probably be under Public Works, but I need some direction, well, Sarah and I need direction from the council as to whether they want us to add that to a line item. We can work with Bruce and figure out where to put it, but we want to make sure that it's, it's not just an initiative by one councilman, but by the council. It goes back to something we kind of agreed on prior, that initiatives need to come through the chair as, as something that the whole body is on board for, otherwise, we're wasting our time trying to fit that in.
Okay. So that said, I'm happy to, for the council to take that topic up, but in the interest of time and the agenda, I'd prefer to put it under new business tonight.
I actually put it under the some reaction items.
Okay, that's fair.
Because it's a kind of a wrap-up.
Yes.
I have that, and I also have the, Joe's suggestion for added road appropriations.
Yes, okay, perfect. Okay, any other further comments from the council? I'll go next. Mr. Mackey, relative to your remarks, I'm more than happy to, you alluded to the fact that you feel comfortable having a conversation with myself and, and the manager, and I'm happy to get that going on a mutually acceptable date, sooner than later.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, then we can move to approval of minutes on our agenda. Before you have the April 2, 2019 budget workshop session minutes, if you haven't had a chance to look at those prior, please do so now.
I thought they were fine, too.
All right, then I would entertain a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve the open session minutes for the town council meeting on April 9, 2019.
Motion's been made. April 2.
He did the second one. Sorry, he did this. We can do that.
And April 2, 2019.
I think we have to take them separately.
So you want to just approve the, the one he did?
Yes.
Okay, second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the minutes of the April 2 budget workshop session of the council.
You mean ninth.
He said the ninth.
You know what, I'll retract my motion, I'll start afresh.
Yes, we're all looking at the second.
I will make a motion to approve the budget workshop minutes for the April 2, 2019 meeting of the town council.
That motion's been made, and seconded. Further discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the April 2, 2019 budget workshop session minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Abstentions, abstentions. So the motion passes 5-0-1. Next up are the open session minutes for our April 9 meeting of the council.
Okay, I'd like to propose a motion for April 9, 2019 open session minutes.
Motion's been made and seconded. Hearing no other discussion, all those in favor of approving the April 9, 2019 open session minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay, and any abstentions. Again, Mr. Federici is abstaining. Okay, now moving on, seems like we have a head of steam going here. Communication, correspondence, and announcements. Mr. Florence, nothing on that end? Okay, we are going to move hopscotch over public hearings for now, because those are time-sensitive, and move to orders of the day, 9A, licensing matters. "The appointment and confirmation of the Eastland Metal Police Department as agent of the town council, acting as the local licensing authority pursuant to the charter, Article 2, Section 5, and Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 138, for the purpose of investigation and enforcement." And that is a big mouthful, and I'll be happy to explain the reasoning for that to the public, as well as for the council in the event they have clarifications, to, looking for clarification. Almost two months ago, the chief of police directed a letter to the town manager, and tangentially to me, because I am the president of the licensing authority at this current time, relative to an incident that the police department responded to in very early March, relative to a citizen complaint, and/or apparently it was an assault, or allegation of an assault. In doing so, the location of this incident was at the premises of an establishment in town who is licensed to sell alcohol. The officer, in responding and questioning the parties involved, observed that there were lights on in the establishment, and it was somewhere between 2:00 and 3:00 a.m., and so he tried to enter the premise, and found the door not to be locked, and was able to enter, and one thing led to another in terms of the questioning about, you know, patrons are still in the facility, and it appeared that beverages were in front of the patrons. The long and short of that is, though MGL speaks about the police department being an agent of the council, because there isn't this motion on the books, the officer could only address the matter of the allegations that occurred in the parking lot, and could not question or enforce the obvious fact that this establishment was outside of the licensing hours, and appearing to still have alcoholic beverages available to patrons. So in a conversation with the chief, he said, "In order for my people to enforce the, you know, the licensing parameters, we have to be formally made agents of the council and/or for the town." I sought out Attorney Maynard for that specific purpose, and this wording is specifically crafted by Attorney Maynard, and it's a one-step process, if you are in so agreement, to take this action tonight. It officializes the, the operation, and allows, going forward, if an officer surmises in his or her patrolling that any establishment is open after the approved licensing hours, that they may enter the premises and question, and, and take due action, which would, I'm guessing, to be to close the establishment for that particular time, write a report and refer it to the council as licensing authority. So, any questions about that? As the council, I think we want to be in a position to give the chief and his force the official toolbox they need to do their job properly, and in the interest of being the licensing authority, it behooves us to make sure that the licensees that have been granted these licenses are doing their due diligence as well to be in compliance. Mr. Florence?
Just to add, I checked with some surrounding towns in with the ABCC, if it gets to a point that there's repeat offenses, you can, you as the council as the local licensing authority can have a hearing with the establishment owner, and as long as you're consistent with everybody.
Correct.
You know, you can enforce, you know, fines for the first time, the second time, so you're going to have the ability to do that.
Through the chair, I think in this instance, that never, without giving them this authority to do this, then it never comes before us, because technically they-
To get a report back, correct.
Right.
Right, they really are not-
Like, I didn't even know that that was an issue, like, until we got this, and, you know, so it makes perfect sense to me to give them, you know, this authority, but if we don't, then those violations are never going to come before us, because they don't really have the authority to even investigate them.
And in the absence of whatever the altercation was outside in that parking lot, that issue would have gone unnoticed.
But it is something that has happened before with a particular establishment, so it's something that we should, you know, just tighten up that, that whole process. I think Tom is also looking for a process that would be a predictable-
Consequence spectrum, yes.
For every, so no matter what restaurant, or wherever it is, it would be the same thing.
Correct.
So, so there won't be sort of willy-nilly what the, you know, consequence is, it'll be really spelled out.
I should also say that in my work with Chief D'Alessio and Mr. Maynard, what occurred in the interim of those two conversations was, I reached out to the ABCC with the contacts that Mr. Florence gave me, and posed the same scenario and questions that you're hearing and thinking about now, and their response was to get a, you know, "We are only comfortable telling you to seek council advice at the local level." Which, as a resident, is a little troubling to me, because their commission set up to guide and make sure that as licensing agents, we're following the directions, and not, you know, dropping a ball, but yet they, when you ask for, "Should we have this motion?" Or, "What's a list of reasonable penalties?" You know, going, so that you're progressive in your discipline if you need it, the response was, "Talk with your town attorney." So that said, we've, we've done our due diligence, and I'm asking for you to approve this motion, so we can equip our police department with the tools they need to do the job on our behalf, yes.
I'll read the motion for you then. So I just wanted to add, prior to reading the motion, that other communities have adapted similar policies, such as what we're talking about tonight, for enforcement purposes. So the motion reads, "Approve the appointment and confirmation of the Eastland Metal Police Department as agent of the town council, acting as the local licensing authority pursuant to chapter, pursuant to the charter, Article 2, Section 5, and Mass. General Law, as Chapter 138, for the purpose of investigation and enforcement."
Second.
The motion's been made and seconded. Is there any additional discussion?
I have a comment to make. I think that we're, we might be missing something here with regards to, maybe in this motion, we add the reporting of, instead of the purposes of investigation and enforcement, which would require them to produce a report to give it to the council, so we're aware of these violations occurring, and we can keep track of them, so if they continue to occur in the same, you know, establishment, we can take some action.
Yeah, I thought maybe I misunderstood that, but aren't you putting a standard operating procedure together, and violation 1, 2, 3, so if it's a first violation, then we're going to, so that's to come, I assume, right?
Correct. And I can tell you from my discussions with Chief D'Alessio, that the department as well does that, you know, they keep a list of offenses, if you will, to the licensing issues.
Yeah, no, it's a good point, so should-
Should we amend the motion to say, and report? I can also say that I think there's no issue with the police doing their diligence and notifying us.
They're the ones that notified us of this, yeah.
Right. But if you want to, you know, make it official, then amend them.
It would be official, though, because it's standard operating procedure, if there's any violation that's taking place, there'd be an incident report that the police department would be doing anyway.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
It is the town council acting as the licensing authority that is responsible for enforcement.
Correct.
To the extent you're authorizing the police to assist in enforcement, that implies a reporting function to this council, the standard-
Okay, so it's implied within the language of this-
That was the intention.
Okay, well, that's good to know, and we don't have to amend that.
So we're good then?
I think we're good, unless there's other questions.
As long as we're clear that the reporting takes place.
Correct.
The only suggestion, unless we're limited by, some ways by statute or regulations, is if you have outrageous violations, I think they should be more severely addressed. For instance, you know, let's say you're only open till midnight for the sake of discussion, and you're serving alcohol at 3:00 in the morning, that's far cry from serving alcohol at 12:07. So I think we ought to, it can't be something where it says, "Well, listen, I'll pay the $50 fine for, for a first violation, but I'm going to max it out, we'll do an all-nighter here." So I think that's something that should be considered as well.
And I think, relative to Mr. Maynard's most recent remarks, the council has that latitude in its discussion, as well as in calling for the owner to appear before us for a hearing.
So to Don's point, if an egregious violation, they come before us, and then-
We shouldn't be boxed in to say, "First offenses, they get boxed."
Right, and, but also, it doesn't have to be outrageously egregious for us to bring them in, it could be multiple minor violations.
At our discretion.
It really is at our discretion, we have that, that latitude within the licensing authority.
And I think that SOP, the standard operating procedure that Tom's putting together, is important to show that that reporting takes place to the council?
Yes. Okay, if there's no other discussion, the motion's been moved and seconded. If there's no other discussion, the motion's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Are there any abstentions? Thank you. That motion passes. Mr. Maynard, thank you for your help with that. Okay, also, under Licensing Matters Number 9A2, the Continued Discussion and Confirmation of the BYOB Policies. I'll make this simple for all of us this evening. The, a request for a BYOB policy emanated from our licensing subcommittee back in November and December. From there, it went to the Bylaw Committee. We spoke about it at our last regular council meeting. In the interim, there has been some discussion among the committee members of both of those subcommittees as it relates to the actual intention of the actions we took. So, I've spoken with two of the members, Mr. Federici, I did that before the meeting. I'm sorry you-
Sorry, I was late.
That's okay. And the consensus is, for now, to set this agenda item aside till the two subcommittees might have some face-to-face conversation, as well as not to tie up our energy and time at the present moment with the knowledge that our primary obligation as a council right now is to get a budget that the town can live with. And then, once we're past June 1st, then we can come back to the table and get this set up the right way. So, I will entertain a motion to table that discussion.
So moved.
Second.
To the first meeting in June.
Well, to a time when we can, we'll just activate the two subcommittees, and then they'll come to us. All those in favor of tabling the confirmation of the BYOB policy, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. That motion passes unanimously. And so-
Madam President, could I suggest you have a few minutes, and we have the town attorney here for item D2, D1.
Yes, and we're heading toward that right now because we're not at 6:30. So, moving to new business, we have a vote to exercise the right of first refusal to purchase the property at 7 Schuyler Drive in Benton Estates. And again, as Ms. Menard said, this is a somewhat complex matter to articulate properly. So, we've asked the, our Town Council to join us this evening, to educate us a little bit and give a recommendation.
Thank you. I have looked at this program. I've also been in touch with a staff person assigned to this particular program at the Massachusetts Department of Housing and Community Development. It is commonplace, particularly in smaller cities and towns of this size, to pass on the opportunity, on the options presented to the town. Which options are to buy the property, let me back up. The program is designed to allow persons of low to median income to own homes in communities that have taken part in this program. The threshold, the standard, is 80% of the median household income of the community. Somebody who's below that level, they qualify as a buyer and as a homeowner. This home was purchased by such a homeowner some time ago. He's now looking to sell the property. In accordance with the requirements of this program, he must first offer it to the town, which has the option to buy the property itself and resell it to a qualified buyer, to search, to act essentially as a broker, to search for a qualified buyer, and then facilitate the transaction from owner to buyer. Or to take a pass and allow those options to pass to the state, which, under the Department of Housing and Community Development, maintains these staff persons to work with communities to do those, the same things, essentially to find a qualified buyer and to facilitate that sale. I inquired of the state staff person whether it was commonplace to, for a town of this size in particular, to pass, and she said, "Absolutely, we're looking forward to the town doing so. We want to, we, the state, want to manage this process. We're ready to rock and roll. We're just waiting for the town, for 30 days within which the town must act, to pass, or for the town to make a decision that it will not act." And it's my recommendation, based on all of those factors. Well, the town can do two things, in accordance with my recommendation, either do nothing and let the 30 days pass, and I believe that 30 days runs two or three days from now-
From now until the 25th.
Until the 25th. Or to affirmatively state that the town will take no position, and thereby shorten that period by a day or so. And the state staff person is waiting for my communication that the Town Council has taken that vote. She has a letter ready to go to the homeowner, and she will then facilitate through the town clerk the process of trying to find a qualified buyer for the property, so that the property may remain in that program.
Okay.
Talking to Ms. Richards, prior to the meeting, under the prior form of government, there was a Housing Assistance Committee that was responsible for maintaining a list of qualified buyers and helping facilitate that process. Again, it appears that the state is anxious to do so itself. I don't know that the town needs to be involved any more than the state wishes it to be involved, but that, of course, is up to you.
Any other questions?
The question, do we relinquish any rights if we allow it to move to the state?
No. No, the state then has 30 days to exercise its options to buy, to find a buyer. And if those options aren't exercised, you could lose the property from the rolls of affordable housing, in that the owner could then sell the property at whatever price he or she chooses. However, the excess between that sales price and the qualified price, it's called, the price that is fixed by formula under the state program, the excess comes to the town. So, you may lose the property from the rolls of, quote-unquote, "affordable housing." You gain that delta between the qualified price and the price which is sold.
And it may set a precedent for the future, if we decide to take action one way or the other?
No.
You have the option each and every time this comes up. It hasn't come up, my inquiry to the town clerk indicates it hasn't come up within the memory of anybody currently serving.
No.
Maybe it's an exception.
Refinings.
Refinings came up. The state did say that the town, they have record of the town losing the property, a property from the affordable housing rolls quite some time ago. No, I don't think you want that to happen, but I think the town can exercise any of these options each and every time the opportunity arises.
Okay. If I may, I was going to say, actually, in the seven years I was a selectman, we had at least two that we were active in the, in finding a new person to buy the house. And my question is, so if the state takes this, and they don't end up finding a low-income housing person, how does that affect us if we end up losing a house off of our low-income housing rolls? Does that affect our percentages? Does that, you know?
It doesn't affect the town's position financially, as far as I can understand it, but certainly philosophically, to the extent the town continues to want to be able to offer affordable housing within this program to residents, you're one unit short.
Thank you.
And again, just because you have ceded the opportunity to the state, doesn't mean that the town loses its input. According to the State Department of Housing and Community Development, they want the locality to be, to remain involved in finding a qualified buyer.
Done.
Just a question for our viewers as well. If people watching and say, "Listen," they have a friend or family that wants to be a part of this, they say, "Oh, wow, my daughter, who meets the income qualifications, would like that." Is there an address or a number they can call and put their name on this list of potential purchasers of this property?
I'm sure there is. I don't know it, but I will get that information to the town clerk.
And if they call our office or the town clerk, we can direct them-
Maybe we can promote it or something.
Because we don't want to lose it off the affordable housing.
I think it's enough interest, I guess, I mean, enough awareness on this.
Any other questions? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion from one of the councils.
I'll make a motion, I don't know if we have it already written up or not.
That's right here.
What about, sorry, we?
Down the bottom.
Down the bottom. I'll make a motion to authorize a quote-unquote "no response" letter to the buyer of 7 Schuyler Drive, Benton Estates, having the State Department of Housing and Urban Development orchestrate the sale.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Maynard, I presume you'll write that no-response letter?
I will. I'll, for the first. I'll work designing it.
Correct. Thank you very much, again, for your help. Okay, well, we have moved, addressed all items on our agenda thus far. Is there any old business? I don't see.
Don't worry.
Want to go to summary right now, in case there's some things that come out of the public hearings?
You got to adjourn real quick. It's up to you.
Adjourn?
Five-minute recess.
Five-minute recess.
Five-minute recess.
How about a five-minute recess?
Oh, the Bruins are on, and 35.
We can do it. Or we can appropriate a flat-screen TV.
That would be a little distracting.
Yeah, it would be.
Pleasantly so.
Motion for a five-minute recess?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Take a five-minute break. Thank you. Back in session, it is 6:34, and now we can legally proceed with the public hearing portion of our agenda. And so I'll move directly to item 8A, the Proposed Bylaw for Stormwater Enterprise Fund. This is the second reading, and I will, for the benefit of the public, I will read the parameters for open meeting, I'm sorry, open meaning, public hearing. Too many fancy names in this kind of work. The reason for this public hearing is to read for the second time a new proposed Stormwater Enterprise Fund bylaw. I'll introduce the councilors, members, from left to right. Councilors Ford, Anderson Hill, Kane, O'Connor, and Federici. This is a public hearing, and we will use the following procedure. I'll open the public meeting. The clerk will read the legal notice and to the record. The applicant, in this case, the DPW, will read the new proposed bylaw regarding a stormwater enterprise fund. Since the meeting's being recorded, I will ask anyone who wishes to address the council to identify themselves and clearly state their name and address. After the applicant has finished any comments, I will then open the hearing for public input. All parties should address the president of the council, not each other, or anyone else in the audience. After the public has addressed the council, I will then close the public hearing. The next step is to have the council discuss among themselves the matters pertinent to the proposed enterprise fund bylaw. The council will then move forward with a vote to approve, or not approve, the stormwater enterprise fund bylaw, or have the option to take the matter under advisement. That being said, I will open the public hearing. Mr. Florence, will you read the legal notice, please?
The East Long Meadow Town Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, April 23rd, 2019, at 6:30 PM in the media room at the Council on Aging, located at 328 North Main Street, to address a new proposed stormwater enterprise fund bylaw. Information related to this proposed bylaw is on file with the town clerk and available for review by the public. For the council, Thomas Florence, clerk of the council.
Thank you. Okay, so then we have our DPW superintendent and deputy superintendent with us this evening.
Good evening.
Hello again, good evening. And you, would you just give an overview again, even though this is the second hearing?
Yeah, I'm actually going to let Tom speak at this hearing.
Did Tom know that?
He comes with me every meeting and doesn't say much.
He should share the microphone.
Exactly.
Very nice of you, Bruce, thank you. So, we're here, again, to discuss the draft Stormwater Enterprise Fund bylaw. This will be the second reading, and we're here to discuss the language of the document and any public comments. The utility, the new stormwater utility will provide a funding source for the town of East Long Meadow to comply with the new MS4 permit mandated by the EPA and DEP, which became effective July 1st, 2018. So.
Okay.
Any other questions?
That said, then we can ask the public, or any members of-
One of you has to read for a second time.
Oh, one of you has to read again. This is a very confusing question.
This one?
Yes.
The bylaw summary, "The Stormwater Management Program is a state mandate designed to promote the health and safety of the public, to protect property from flooding and damage caused by a stormwater runoff, and to protect and manage water quality by controlling the level of pollutants and stormwater runoff in the flow of water as conveyed by man-made and by natural stormwater management systems and facilities. There is hereby established under the Department of Public Works a utility known as Stormwater Division, under the day-to-day supervision of the Superintendent of Public Works. The Department of Public Works shall administer the stormwater management programs of the town through the Stormwater Division. It shall be funded by revenue collected through the Stormwater Fee and such other funds as may, from time to time be appropriated or obtained through other sources, including but not limited to grants and low-interest loans. A full description of the Stormwater Enterprise Fund bylaw, including scope of responsibilities, stormwater management credit policy, and stormwater enterprise funding is available on file at the town clerk's office, Town Hall 60 Center Square, East Long Meadow, Massachusetts, 01028." Thomas Florence, clerk.
Okay, now that we have done that officially, if there's anyone in the audience who wishes to speak, I'd ask you to please come forward, identify yourselves, and we're happy to have your input. Mr. Page?
Close, but not too far. May I use your seatbelt, Benny? Ralph Page, 306 Prospect Street. I was in front of you roughly a month ago, when you created a stormwater enterprise fund, which would use the fees to pay for, from what the bylaw says, is a new stormwater division within the DPW. At that time, I spoke that, in order to divide the DPW, or any organization, per the charter, the town manager must submit an organization plan. I was told at that time that, "Well, we'll just do a line item under the highway, instead of creating a new division." So, we fast-forward a month, and now this bylaw specifically says, "A stormwater division will be created to manage the stormwater." I've asked Mr. Florence for a copy of the town manager's organization plan, which will point out all the highlights. It'll point out the benefits to this. And I was told that at this time, none's been submitted. So, with that, just so that everyone's clear, Article 5, Section 1 of the charter, second paragraph, "The town manager may, from time to time, prepare and submit to the town council organization or reorganization plans that establish operating divisions for the orderly, efficient, or convenient conduct of the business of the town. Every organization or reorganization plan submitted by the town manager pursuant to this provision shall contain a proposed bylaw," which we have, "which sets out in detail such amendments, insertions, revisions, repeals, otherwise existing bylaws, as may be necessary to accomplish the desired reorganization." Such organization or reorganization- Such organization or reorganization plan and proposed bylaw shall be accompanied by a message of the town manager which explains the benefits expected to ensue. At this time, you're expected to hold a public hearing and vote on this, and yet, there has been no reorganization plan submitted to you. It's my feeling, I've had a meeting with the superintendent and Tom, I'm looking at the stormwater as regulated by the state and what needs to be done. There's 3,200 catch basins in town that needs to be cleaned. The streets need to be swept. They're asking in their budget for a single truck and a single employee. Well, if you drive down the road right now and you watch them cleaning the basins, they have at least two or three employees, they have a truck with a great big scoop. I mean, the budget and what you see doesn't coincide with each other. I agree. I know stormwater. I know it's gotta be taken care of. I know the state's looking at pollutants going into it. I understand that. I think it's more efficient for the town council to enlarge their budget and the highway department. I looked at the proposed budget. It looks like there's a turnback to the town from the highway of $25,000 for, because they're creating a Stormwater Division, and it'll be paid out of that. But we're looking at a budget of $285,000, and they're turning back $25,000, so how did they do all of this on $25,000? I, the numbers aren't coinciding. I know they need money to do it. I'm not against it. I know it's gotta be done. I just, I look at the charter and their specific criteria in order to do this. I think a reorganization plan, looking at it, looking at the budget down the road, is extremely important. There's no way for $285,000 that they're gonna be able to have the scoop truck, have the pickup truck, take care of the management, take care of 3,200 storm drains, take care of the infrastructure. I mean, we all know it, it's gonna take money to do that. So if we start with a fee of roughly $25 on the residents for the first year, that's gonna jump. I mean, there's no way it can't jump. It just doesn't seem accurate at the moment. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Phil Avery, 55th Street, East Long Meadow. I agree with Ralph to a degree. There is 3,200 storm drains that has to be addressed in this operation. But the DPW and the town has asked before to set up a separate fund to fund this activity in the future. It's probably not correct to spread this cost of this initiative only to homeowners in an even basis. But at least, there are limits as far as 3,200 to be spread out over a number of years. They're not gonna be done in one year. So there's a chance of adjusting your plans to address all these problems and fulfill the MS4 requirements of DEP. This is just the first step of initiating an organization to address that. The fees in the future can be always adjusted to whatever the costs with the projects that have to be addressed. And those costs would be, have to be shared individually to, in that fee schedule. The fee schedule is flexible. It'll be addressed by the town council as far as how much to be charged and what projects will be done, but it's not all gonna be done in one year. It was ridiculous to think of its 3,200 storm drains being addressed in one year. So this is just the first step in requesting this fund to be established to address that particular problem. I would recommend that the town council vote to approve this funding, establishment of this fund, to go forward and to address these problems. There's a lot of benefits that are gonna come out of it, that will be satisfying a lot of DEP requirements in the future, and establish a database of what's done and what's not done, so we can address those particular issues with better data as we do these inspections. So my recommendation is to approve this Enterprise Fund and start on this project and meeting the DEP requirements right now.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Avery. Anyone else, please? Hearing none. I will close the public hearing. At this time, the council has an opportunity to discuss the matters pertinent to this motion. Mr. Anderson.
I have to agree with Ralph Page's comments. As far as the organizational plan, I think we should make this motion further contingent on the town manager submitting an organizational plan to the council and to the DPW pursuant to Article 5, Section 1.
I can certainly do that. I did not, because I took this to be similar to the Sewer and Water Division. The Public Works established that, the town attorney said, we did not need to do that. So I did not, thinking that it would be addressed by the public hearing. It's clearly stated what the division would do, but certainly I can provide that. That's not a problem. But it was not ignored. It was really done because the town attorney had said, it's not establishing a whole new division. It's a department, it's under a department already. So, but I can certainly do it.
Yeah, I think it just clarified.
Anyone else on the council?
I won't be doing it.
If I can, I'd like to reiterate my position. I brought that up in, probably a month ago, and I still firmly believe that this ought to be within the purview of the council during the budgeting process, and not left up to a department head to recommend what the fees are gonna be that are gonna be passed on to our residents. I still have a problem with that, and as both the speakers mentioned, this is a monumental task. We know it's a state mandate. We know we have to fund it. But let's fund it on a year-to-year basis and not try to guess what it's gonna cost. Let's try to keep things intact the way they are now with regards to placing money into the highway department to fund this as part of the budget process, and that way we can control the rate of increase in our taxes that are going to our residents and not pass on an automatic $25, in addition to the other expenses which haven't been mentioned, which is, if I remember correctly, 100 to 500 for our businesses in town are gonna be charged, an automatic rate. Now, we already know from listening to the DPW in our budget hearings that the water and sewer rates are gonna increase. This is gonna be an increase. Even if we do our due diligence and cut the budget the way we hope to, we're still gonna have a tax increase to pass on. I'm not comfortable with all this. You know, speaking as a resident and a counselor, I'm not happy passing on all these costs to our residents.
Mr. Florence? Yeah, no, I understand where you're coming from, Tom. And I guess, thinking of it a different way, then, the way they're proposing it is a flat fee that's equal to all residents. Doesn't matter if you have $100,000 property or a million-dollar piece of property. If we don't, and we put it into a normal budget item, then it's gonna be part of essentially a mill rate, and then it's gonna be, you know, disproportionate to some extent, because if you have a lower-value property, then therefore you're contributing much less in that regard. So I don't know if that's better or worse, but I'm just throwing it out there, but I do think businesses who use substantially more water should pay more under this fee structure. So I don't know what's fair there, because we don't have a mixed rate. So a business is gonna pay proportionate amount of, you know, whatever the mill rate's established, and then whatever their property taxes are. So, you know, I understand where you're coming from. I just, I guess I'd wanna know, like, so what would we put into the budget to fund this then, and how would essentially that work? I don't know if that's ultimately any better. Maybe we have a little bit more control, but it's not like we're giving up control. If they come next year and we say, $25 wasn't enough, we need to be 26 next year, we still have to approve it. So, I mean, that's where I feel like we're not, we're not really giving up control, and, you know, I guess, we talked about it originally, it was, you know, Bruce's opinion and Sarah's opinion that be established. So I'm open to ideas. I guess I would just have to understand how we would, you know, how we would then take it from this fund and then put it into a normal budget line item.
Without it affecting the mill rate?
Well, it will.
It will, if it goes into the--
So how much do we put in there then? That's why, I guess that's why I'm having trouble wrapping my head around. I'm not saying you're wrong. I just don't know how to then take it from what is a flat fee to equal 280, whatever, sorry, I don't have it.
Yeah.
280 something thousand dollars, to then, how much do we affect the mill rate to equal that back? And that, only that amount then gets put in for that use? So if you guys can help me with that, I'm open to something different, if that ultimately makes more sense to you guys.
Well, the objective was not to have it affect the mill rate, correct?
Yes.
So that's the solution we're looking for, for going to try to manage it a different way, and maybe Sarah has some input.
In answer to your question, Mr. Florence, it would be a 15 cent increase.
15 cents?
Again, that's assuming that we don't cut somewhere else. So we're making this, we're basing this assumption.
No, the question was just--
You took the 285,000 and merged it into a line item.
Correct.
Approximately a 15 cent increase alone on the mill rate, exclusive of whatever else happens with line item budgets, correct?
Correct.
Because every half a million is 25 cents.
Twenty, it's 25 cents.
Okay, so it's a ratio of that.
Exactly.
And that result is we're, it's gonna affect people. Which way we do it is yet to be determined. It'll, if we do it in the budget, like a normal family, it'll affect some people less than others. If we do it like this, and it's a flat, every resident's paying 25, you know, so I don't know. Either way, they're gonna pay something.
My comment would be, I hear you say, Bruce, that for residential properties, it would be a $25 flat fee initially.
Yes.
And for businesses, somewhere between 100 and 400, and that's predicated on the size of the business, the square footage of the property?
Based on the land use code.
Land use code?
Land use code. So it goes from $25 from residential, commercial properties, $100. Commercial property with a land use code of 031 is a $200 fee. And then for residential condos with a land use code of 102 is a $500 fee. And then for industrial, commercial properties, is a $500.
And that's a pre-established?
Yes.
It's not that your DPW board said--
No, it's based on the impervious surface in that given land use code.
What seems a little bit out of kilter to me is a $25 flat fee for residents because of the land use code, but yet we have homes in this community that are, that go from modest with 1,000 to 1,500 square footage of living space, to some, the very large homes with 3,000 or more square footage, but yet, and probably the much bigger homes have more occupants in them. But yet they pay the same.
Right. I understand. I was just trying to make it as simple as possible. Other communities have actually gone out and actually calculated each resident's home, measured the impervious surface, everything else. I was trying to simplify--
That'll take a year or more.
So I tried to simplify the process. Like you said, I've taken other communities on what they have done. Some have actually took it to the extreme. Long Meadow has actually done that, based on your impervious surface area. Other communities have come up with a flat fee. So I've kinda taken the, I guess, the best of a few different boilerplates, I guess you could say, and came up with this fee, based on our budget needs.
And also to use your example, some of the larger properties are the newer subdivisions, which have stormwater management in place already. So the older parts of town are--
Understood. The ones that need to dump--
They're just going right into the storm system directly.
Right.
Whereas some of the other properties are--
Good point.
Going into detention and retention.
Right.
So.
Yeah, it's, it's--
Good point.
Lot of moving parts.
Yeah, so when you think of it like that, you essentially--
Well, when you say it like that, now it makes sense.
They're more compliant, and you do essentially penalize--
The newer developments are home-compliant ready.
Right.
You know, some of the residents are paying, paying for that, too, that have restrictive covenants in place, because these neighborhoods, you know, they have to maintain themselves through fees and maintain the retention and retention ponds on an as-needed basis. But when we're talking about impervious, it doesn't have anything to do with the size of the structure, but it does have something to do with the amount of land, correct?
With the driveway, roof.
Yeah, it's usually typically roof, driveways, patios, things of that nature. Yes.
But then there's the, sort of the all-encompassing, which is our roadway system, which everybody uses and everybody needs to pay for.
Yeah.
Which is gathering almost all the stormwater. So there's a flat rate in there somewhere for everyone, whatever that number happens to be. Everyone's sort of maintaining that stormwater, because you can't drive if it's not there.
Any other questions?
I did have another question. This is something that was mentioned by our public speakers as well. We spoke about this during the budget process. In the Highway Division, you're giving back $25,000 as part of the work that's not gonna be done by that department any longer, and will now be part of this new division, the Stormwater Division, but yet you're asking for 200, almost $300,000. So I see a big disparity there as well. I don't understand.
How can I give back money when I don't have an established fund already? You will see in the next year's budget process on the shifting and moving parts of, within the Highway Division, to move things over to the Stormwater Enterprise Fund. This wasn't established back when I submitted my budget, so how can I take out of a division when I don't have another division to put it in, because it hasn't been voted on or approved with? If this doesn't get approved, I still need to maintain our system. So, like you said, it's an evolving program, the Stormwater Enterprise Fund. You're gonna see more changes, obviously, as the years go on. If this gets approved, you'll see big changes in the Highway Division. I'm not gonna say hundreds of thousands of dollars, but yeah, a good chunk of change, I would say.
So there is some maintenance being done now.
Yes.
It's just not in compliance with what the regulations, they have upped the regulations significantly.
Compliance with the old permit.
Right. So--
So all the new regulations, all the new work that we have to do, that's the difference in the cost.
And some of, some of that would shift from, you know, the guys that are doing the road sweeping now and the--
And like you said, I'm trying, like you said, it's gonna evolve moving forward. I'm trying to keep the cost at a minimum, and then, like you said, as we move forward, if bodies are needed, more people, we're gonna obviously put those into our, into our operational budgets for these divisions.
Operational, or the Stormwater Enterprise Fund?
The Stormwater Enterprise.
Right.
Yes.
Okay.
And start shifting even vehicles and things of that nature for repairs. So like you said, we need to start somewhere. This is the start, and then obviously evolving forward is to move and shift monies around.
But day one, you're not gonna have any money until you start to assess these fees.
Right. Well, yes, once you start collecting the fees.
So that assessment of the fees is gonna take place in the next fiscal year.
Yes.
So in the meantime, what are your plans to comply with the MS4 and do any of the work?
Well, if this gets approved, obviously, based on the funding and everything else, I'm gonna, obviously, based on that dollar figure, hopefully that's what we're gonna collect. And I'm not sure on the accounting side on how that takes place.
Is Sarah--
The bills will go out, obviously, in the July 1st timeframe.
So the billing cycle will be after July 1st?
Yes.
And then the monies will start to accumulate in this fund?
Yes.
And most of our requirements for June 30th have already been taken care of, so money's been allocated already for that. So that'll just be the next year.
So everybody gets a second whack at this a year from now, right?
Yes.
To adjust accordingly.
Right, and like you said--
We're not boxed in.
You talk about the fees?
Yes.
The fees, right?
Yes.
Yeah, that's why we, that's why when we did the bylaw, we put the fees outside of the bylaws.
Correct.
I put a regular bylaw every time.
Right.
So as, as we start up, certainly there's gonna be some investment upfront that is gonna be on the high end. I would expect, let's not paint a rosy picture that's not there, I would expect that the state regulations are gonna continue to get more and more stringent, and it will cost us more. But there is a possibility that it might level off or go down a teeny bit once we're up and running. We've got the regulations in place, and we know exactly what we're doing to address issues like the salt in the storm drains and all of that, and taking the roof leaders out of the storm. There's a lot of things that might, there is a possibility that this is--
There's a lot of things that might, there is a possibility that this is, it might go up, but it also could come down, and it can be adjusted the way it's been put together. To put that expense into the regular budget gets us closer to the Prop 2 and 1/2 issues.
Unless we cut. And we keep talking about raising, but we need to cut as well. I'm sorry. I see cuts as a, as something that is necessary going forward in our budget as it is.
Certainly.
So this is an automatic increase, and that's how I see it. It's automatic. There's no disputing it. You get it, everybody pays it, or you don't pay it. And the tax rate, the mill rate, is our responsibility to maintain. So anything that's added to it, we also can deduct from it.
But the Enterprise Fund is also in your control.
It's a set fee.
But it's approved by you all. It's part of the budget that can-
Just reduce.
You can say, I mean, the recommendation is of the Public Works Board to the council, and the council can say, we can't go up 10 cents this year. You know, it is up to the council. It is part of your budget, you know. That's why it's called out as a separate, separate items in the budget process itself.
I have one more question for the chair. So Bruce, I mean, the fee could, obviously is a moving target for another reason, such as more commercial buildings being built in town, or expansion, right?
Right, yes.
I mean, if they make their parking lots bigger because business is growing, or we're adding these medical centers, or we're going to be talking about 330 Chesson Street. All those are positive funds that will flow, that will help defer the fees from the residents, because those impervious surfaces are going to get larger.
Yes, exactly. Thanks.
Any other questions from the council? Okay, we're at that point in the hearing where the council needs to take a vote to either approve or not. And you have a motion, wording for a motion.
Can we read it? Your proposing motion to approve a new proposed Stormwater Enterprise Fund is read into the minutes at the April 9th, 2019, and April 23rd, 2019 Town Council meeting.
Motion's been made, and-
You need to move it.
Seconded, somebody, anybody?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Hearing no desire for further discussion. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Abstentions. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thanks.
Good luck with it.
We think.
Give it your best shot.
You wouldn't say that before the vote, would you?
Thank you.
Okay, we are two.
Got to start somewhere.
It is.
Our next hearing is a proposed zoning map amendment to rezone parcel 27-154A-A, otherwise known as 51 Prospect Street, from Residence C to Business Zoning District. This as well is a second reading. And again, the parameters are, the reason for the public hearing is for the town to approve a change to the zoning map from Residence C to Business Zoning District for 51 Prospect Street, introducing the council from the left, councilors Ford, Anderson, Hill, Kane, O'Connor, and Federici. The public hearing will be opened. Clerk will read the legal notice into the record. The applicant, in this case, it is the Town Council, will read the second time, read for the second time the language for the proposed zoning map change. Anyone who speaks is asked to come to the table and identify themselves. All parties who are speaking should address the chair and not to one another or anyone else in the audience. When the council, when the public is finished commenting, I'll close the public hearing. At that time, the council will have the opportunity to discuss the matters, and then finally, the council will take a vote to approve the zoning map change, or not, or take it under advisement. That said, the public hearing is open. Mr. Florence, will you read the notice into the record, please?
Yes. The East Long Meadow Town Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, April 23rd, 2019, at 6:45 PM in the media room of the Council on Aging, located at 328 North Main Street, to address a zoning map amendment to rezone parcel 27-154A-A, 51 Prospect Street, from Residence C to Business Zoning District. Information related to this amendment is on file with the town clerk and available for review by the public. For the council, Thomas Florence, clerk of the council.
Okay, again, now the applicant, in this case, the council. And Mr. Florence will ask you to do this part. We'll read the language for the proposed zoning map. Yep, please.
Okay, language. Simple, zoning map language. To approve and update to the zoning map at assessors parcel 27-154A-A, otherwise known as 51 Prospect Street, a .3-plus acre site, from Residence C to Business District, as requested by the planning board.
Thank you. At this time, if there is anyone here in the audience who wishes to speak, please come Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. This now is the council's opportunity to make any comments or ask any other questions. Hearing nothing, hearing none. I'll entertain a motion to approve the zoning map.
Second.
I'll give you the motion.
You've got to read it first.
We've got to read the motion.
It has to be read first, yes.
You want to read, you want me to?
Sure.
Okay, to approve a proposed zoning map amendment to rezone parcel 27-154 Alpha/Alpha, otherwise known as 51 Prospect Street, from Residence C to Business Zoning District, is read into the minutes at the April 9th, 2019, and April 23rd, 2019 Town Council meetings.
So move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Okay. And finally, moving to our third, oh, can we do our third, yes, we can, third public hearing. The approval of a flammable license application for Sudacor LLC at 82 Deer Run Park Drive for a license to store, to store flammables and combustibles. Again, the protocol here is, the meeting is to address a flammable license application in accordance with the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 148, for Sudacor LLC, located at 82 Deer Park Drive, for a license to store flammables and combustibles. From my left, councilors, at the table are councilors Ford, Anderson, Hill, Kane, O'Connor, and Federici. The hearing will proceed as follows. I will open the meeting, public meeting, the clerk will read the notice into the record. The applicant, Sudacor LLC, will present their request of a flammable license application to the council. Anyone who wishes to speak on this must identify themselves clearly. As well, parties speaking must address the council directly and not each other or anyone else in the audience. After the public has had that opportunity, I will close the public hearing. The council will then have an opportunity to discuss the matters, and then the council will take a vote to approve the flammable license application for Sudacor. That said, I'll open the public hearing, and Mr. Florence, would you please read the legal notice?
Yes. The East Long Meadow Town Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, April 3rd, April 23rd, 2019, at 6:50 PM in the media room of the Council on Aging, located at 328 North Main Street, to address a flammable license application in accordance with the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 148, for Sudacor LLC, located at 82 Deer Park Drive, for a license to store flammables and combustibles. Information related to this application is on file with the town clerk and available for review by the public. For the council, Thomas Florence, clerk of the council.
Thank you. And now the applicant, Sudacor LLC, can make their remarks to the council.
Sure. Sudacor LLC is a melamine impregnator that produces decorative laminated paper. We are under the standard industrial classification-
Sir, can I just interrupt?
Sure.
Excuse me. Just please state your name and your relationship to the, to the organization.
Yes. My name is Patrick Prestow. I am the quality manager at Sudacor. And to my left here is John Klopaki. He is the safety coordinator slash wastewater operator at Sudacor as well.
Thank you.
So back to the top. Sudacor is a melamine impregnator that produces decorative laminated paper. We are under industrial classification 2672, which is coated and laminated papers, and under the North American Industrial Classification Code 322222, which is cabinetry flooring, store fixtures, countertops, and office furniture. The short of it is, rolls of paper are converted to sheets of various sizes after the paper has been saturated with resin and dried. The license that we are applying for is pertaining to three substances. SR4LM, melamine resin. SR432LM, urea resin. And DEG, going under the trade name Fentac AC 8001. Melamine resin, the SR4LM, is classification 3B. We store it in silos, 58,000 pounds. We have six of those silos, so the maximum quantity that we would store of the SR4LM melamine resin would be 348,000 pounds. And these are stored in above-ground storage containers. The SR432LM urea resin is a 3B classification. The maximum quantity that we would store on-site is 232,000 pounds, and this is also an above-ground storage unit. And lastly, the DEG Fentac AC 8001 is also a 3B classification, and we store a maximum quantity of 45,000 pounds, and that is also an above-ground, above-ground storage tank. So the total quantity that we would be storing of the 3B combustible liquids would be 625,000 pounds on-site.
Thank you. At this time, the public will have an opportunity to express their remarks. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak at this time? And we have our fire chief with us this evening, who is required-
I guess I'm speaking on behalf of the town. I have signed up on fire recommendations on the license. They do have permits for storage. This actually came about, they had an environmental consultant do a recent study, and some of the products, if you pull up the MSDS sheets on them, they don't actually list the combustible range on it. They are a Class 3B, which is the least combustible, and they're there very high up, much higher than even diesel fuel. It's not something that you can take a match to, float on, and even structure. And the good thing is, is they're stored in silos inside the structure. They're not outside. There's no chance of any vehicles hitting them. They have a really good safety process. We've been part of their system since they came to town. So if I could make a recommendation to the council to approve the license based on the fire department's review of their integrated plan, and they also have a hazardous materials processing plan permit in place that meets the requirements of the statute of Fire Control laws.
Thank you for that information and recommendation. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak? Seeing none, I will close the public portion of the public hearing. This is an opportunity for the council to offer any input.
I have a couple of questions through the chair. If you were going to increase the amounts, are you, are you maxed out with these containers right now? Like, one container's holding 348,000 pounds, correct?
No. The maximum quantity there is based on the capacity of the silo itself.
That's, that's what I was driving at. So if you wanted to increase that amount, the silo will accommodate more chemical, correct?
Normal operation for us, we don't fill those silos at all, but based on the reading of it, I took it to be the maximum quantity that the silo could hold.
Okay, that, that answers that question. And then the other one is just a technical question. Everything's above ground. Is that, is any of that for EPA, or would it be for gravity purposes? Does that help accommodate your systems by being elevated without pumping?
If you want my say, it's a combination of both, basically above-ground storage tanks. You don't have to worry about it leaking out, getting into the soil.
That covers the EPA portion.
Yes. So they are in burned areas, that, so if they ever do have a spill or rupture, they will stay within that burned area. And we do pump them via diaphragm pump, so it's not really gravity feed, it's air feed.
So these being maxed out, another, if you were going to, if they were, you wanted to increase the amount of chemicals, then you'd have to add another silo.
Correct.
And then you'd be back in front of us again.
Correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else from the council?
One question. What's the life expectancy typically of these silos and containers, 25 years or beyond?
In all honesty, I don't know that.
Okay. It just appears that there's a natural erosion or-
They're fiberglass silos. The product that's in there is not corrosive, so life expectancy should be, and this is a guess, best estimate would be like 35, 45, 50 years. I mean, they're, they're more likely to rupture from somebody hitting them than they would be from corrosion or anything like that, because fiberglass doesn't corrode.
You have safeties against typical vehicles, you know, running and hitting them.
Once again, burned area, so they would have to go through a concrete berm to get to these silos.
The only vehicles that would be in there are four trucks. The only thing I can see wearing from, from my point of view would be the valve, the mechanical parts that are used to pump valves. Other than that, the silo itself, unless there was a major flaw in the construction of it, but yeah, there is.
So a question. So the experience that you've had in the past with the fire chief has been nil? Has there been no incidences at your facility?
Correct. We are a somewhat new facility. We've only been in business since 2007, so 12 years.
So your experience rate's pretty, yeah, pretty low.
We did have, we did have one, a small, a small incident years ago, not with this product at all. It was a, it was a smaller spill within the facility. Required hazmat response. They followed their order call. It was one of those incidents that happened. But the hazmat team came in and cleaned it up, and like what on is normal. There was no, nothing, no waterway detected. There was no injuries.
Okay.
I mean, that's what the plans are in place for. You can't, you can't get away without having some type of hazard potential. But if you have the right plans in place, and actually the right, the right people at the facility that, that know how to manage it, I mean, that's key.
Yeah, and you're a full-time safety manager, is that correct?
Yes.
For that facility only, or you move around?
Oh, no, I, I belong specifically to East Long Meadow.
Okay.
John's been here almost since day one.
2010, I want to say.
Yeah. Patrick, you're pretty close or more.
And you work closely with another, with your insurance carrier?
We deal with them, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Anything else from council? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve this flammable license for Sudacor. Somebody?
Make a motion to approve the flammable license application for Sudacor LLC, 82 Deer Run Park Drive, for a license to store flammables and combustibles.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Motion passes unanimously. Congratulations. Good luck with it.
Thank you.
That concludes item eight, public hearings on our agenda. We have covered everything on the agenda, which now moves us to-
Where are the action items?
New business. Item two, which is action items for the next meeting. And Ms. Menard, you were keeping track of some of them. One was the recommendation from the interested citizens, for lack of a relative to the athletic fields, yes.
The request for, yeah, 25,000 for manpower and 20,000 for fertilizer.
Okay.
If that is the council's-
Just a clarification, it's 20,000 more fertilizer, the area has a line item for fertilizer.
Right, additional.
An additional.
Both of these are additional to what you had in place.
So in order for you to proceed, you need direction from the council?
Yes, I do. Since we're trying to cut the budget, now we're adding, so.
Correct. Understood. How does the council feel about that? Anybody want to make that motion to?
Can I ask a question prior? So are the fertilizer that you're using, are you gonna, are you just kicking up the amount you're using? Are you adding a different application?
After doing some research, the recommendation to the DPW and after talking to Bruce, who would be willing to do this, would be to truly outsource it. Because it's essentially buying the fertilizer now and paying somebody to administer it with town equipment. Instead, it hasn't been particularly effective. You see the conditions of the fields as part of, you know, having, and that's what Bruce is putting together, fertilizer, irrigation, maintenance of the fields in order to improve the quality and, you know, the safety of the fields. So that's all part of it. But to take that, probably have to go to an RFP and then have somebody, an outside company, be responsible for different types of fertilizer, liquid fertilizers, sometimes granular fertilizers, and somebody who's licensed and, you know, knows truly what they're doing. So we felt that would be a quality improvement. That was one step in the right direction. But it's probably going to cost a little more for various municipal reasons when you have outside vendors coming on and potential prevailing wages and things like that. So we may be potentially overestimating that, but we're out of time, so we had to do our best guess.
Yeah, well, it tells me, I mean, it sounds like it's playing out similar to a house, that there'll be different applications done at different points in the season based on, you know, weed control, a feed, you know, maybe a grub control, who knows? But when you put it all together, it's a $20,000 delta to what was there.
When I went out and bought the four steps, my lawn looked like crap. Now I'm going, it's outsourced, my lawn looks awesome. Not as good as Pat Henry's, but it's getting there.
He's all about fertilizer.
Yeah, he is. He's picking weeds right now. So, yeah. So, and again, guys, I understand that this is an ask. We didn't take it lightly. We have so many other initiatives. We didn't want to be a specific agenda item where they wanted to introduce you to these people and talk about all these other things that they're doing and looking for grants, looking for ways to get, you know, internships and other opportunities to minimize the financial impact to the town. But we really are at a point where, and to, you know, to say it's an understatement, so many people, you know, have their kids using the fields. It is, it's become a significant hot bush, hot button issue, and it's not going to go away. And if we don't have some resources more than what we have today, we're not going to make an impact in 2020, FY2020. So I understand it's an ask, but I ask you to consider it if you can.
My question goes to the 25,000, and again, I know you just took a shot at coming up with a number, for labor. It's not full-time, so it would not impact benefits. Is this more like casual labor, like when the schools hire summer help to help the custodians?
Yeah, I mean, Bruce has part-time summer help. Bruce can add to this.
Yes, I'm just trying to understand it.
Yeah, and just to add to this before he answers the question, our thought is that these peak seasonal times, spring and the fall, we have so much demand on the fields, and because of unpredictable weather.
You can't ever catch up.
They're always behind. So it's not that the effort and the focus isn't there, but there's not enough manpower at critical times of the year. So we don't feel it's necessary to say, we need three bodies year-round that are benefit-eligible, but we need more resources now.
So it would be windows of time?
Windows of time when necessary, especially like Mr. Ford said. So during peak season, during fall or spring, especially given the weather we're having now. We had four fields to get ready for baseball today. It rained last night. We blew them up this morning. I don't know necessarily if they got groomed and finished and ready for play at 3:30. But like you said, if you don't have the manpower, like you said, you get two days of rain, you have three days left to mow the fields, you have people calling on sick, you know what I mean? There's a lot of operational nuances that you want to do.
No, I understand all of that. It was just the duration, it's duration of need, in other words.
It's going to be based on our needs at that specific time. It'll be a part-time person. I've actually went on the UMass website today to actually get an intern from UMass to do soil analysis at each one of our facilities, come up with a maintenance plan for us as part of an internship. So like you said, in the past three years, I've taken over like the fertilizer process for the schools and for all the town grounds because this issue came up many years ago. So we just started adding a four-step fertilizer process. But that not be, may not be necessary given the soil conditions at each given location. So by hiring an intern on a part-time basis to do soil analysis and everything else, we're not wasting money also, putting product down that doesn't belong at that location. You know what I mean? So this is kind of all coming together. We still have a lot more work to do, but I think by doing this, it's going to help the department, you know, long-term.
I have a question.
Sure.
They've been meeting a lot, and they, you all met, in fact, today, right, this afternoon, you had another discussion. So do you think there's going to be an issue finding a source for the workforce that can say, I don't want to work on the rainy days, but it's all guns out there on the days that are like right now?
It's going to depend on, I'm thinking college kids and any bodies. And like you said, as-needed basis. And vetting those people out is going to be the big thing. Is telling somebody, okay, we want to hire you part-time, but it's going to be as an as-needed basis. And some college students may like that. They're not committed to a day-to-day job and everything else. We can also backfill later in the afternoons, have them work, you know, keeping one full-time guy on to supervise two or three employees after hours to get things done. So it's kind of evolving, I guess.
One of our residents sent an email to Bruce, you know, about helping find those interns at UMass. Kate had, you know, has been helping. We are chasing down grant opportunities, you know, we're looking at adopt a field opportunities, you know. So we've got so many things in play, but this is, this is a starting point. You need labor to do physical work on the fields, especially at this time of year. And also in the fall to look a season ahead. So we know we have an issue getting on the softball and baseball fields in particular. And so in the fall, some of those prep work are done in the fall to prepare, but he doesn't have enough manpower at those critical times of year. So there's, you know, people who are looking for paid internships, and some of the internships at these colleges allow the kids to go work during certain periods of time and get credits and get paid. So there's, I do not doubt that he'll be able to find a labor.
And there's requirements only when it comes to doing internships for colleges, so many hours of that type of work, so.
But that's an excellent opportunity on the user and us to take advantage of those kind of resources.
And we're going to use them again for our MS4 this year. We have kids out there testing alcohol. Like you said, it's cheap labor, but also helping those kids-
Could you move it forward?
It's actually a two-way street there. You know, we're reaching out and being a good partner to local educational institutions, and they're helping us as well.
So this is almost like, I use the term day labor. So it's, you're going to require, you're going to call up and say, Zeez, we want to start something on Monday. You're going to call ahead and get two people to come in.
Sure.
Okay, under the supervision of a town employee.
Oh, yes.
Because this is not skilled labor.
Yeah, exactly, yes. It's just bodies, obviously, to push a mower, you know what I mean? Like you said, this week it's rained for two days. Now we're trying to catch up. We applied fertilizer last week. Grass is going to take off. So like you said, it's always a difficult challenge to keep up when we have a lot of wet weather.
What are you anticipating for staffing needs, two people?
Oh, it depends. It depends. Like you said, I put the ad out on the UMass website today. I'm expecting, what I am doing right now is I typically hire five college students for summer help. They, obviously, their work includes weed whacking, all of the minor things that our staff are capable of doing, but don't need to do it because their expertise is needed doing other things as mowers and things like that. So I've taken one of those five positions and actually is going to put into, for that soil analysis person, and excuse the terminology if it isn't accurate, I'm sure the student isn't going to think so. But so that's going to be part of that. And then part of, by obviously my highway budget, I have that amount of people that I can hire during the summer hours. But obviously, the $25,000 would be for the spring and fall, for the upcoming seasons, for obviously 2019, 2020.
And we'll build some experience by doing this. Is it possible then to create a separate line item for this? So we know where the expenses are and what the expenses are. That way we have some experience to know for next year what we might need.
Yeah, and I think that, you know, part of the, I think, yeah, it's a great idea because part of the initiative that they're trying to accomplish something specific to the playing fields, you know, and that's where that, I would expect that money goes. So yeah, that would be really important for us to see it, you know.
See if it worked, see how much it costs.
So he's essentially pulling somebody out of, you know, what's budgeted for the upcoming summer and pulling them into right now. And then going forward, we approve July 1st, and then he'll have extra monies for staff, you know, in that critical time to help prepare for the falling season. Then we'll see the results of that. And then we'll see the results of the fertilizer, you know, in the fall and next spring. So we're trying to think two steps ahead as well, because it's not all going to get solved this spring. It's impossible because nothing is different right now other than the effort and the focus. But, you know, things will, we'll see progress. We will. I'm very optimistic.
So that would be an action item then, to make sure that something like that does it.
Well, the timing's perfect to talk about this because our finance committee still has other meetings.
Down the road, right.
And then we can wrap this into it and decide how it all comes to play, right?
So is that your pleasure, or do you want an actual motion?
I think we should just make it official.
Yeah, okay.
Somebody want to call us?
I just have one last tiny question. Could you use high school kids, or were they too, be too young? I'm thinking they have community services to take care of. Yeah, we talked about it, so.
You need to be 18 to work for the environmental works.
Many of them, many of them are.
And to use state equipment, yeah.
Yeah, many of them are. And in order for them to get released from high school, they have to have a work study. So my neighbor goes to kindergarten class, and she's out by 10:15. And the, so this time, well, it's the after-winter break, I think, or something like that. Then they can do those work-study programs. So our committee has identified that. We will approach Gordon and his group, and that's something we'll have to plan for next year because we kind of missed the window. They're essentially, you know, most of those kids, if they're taking advantage of it, they already have something, and they're out in like, what, three weeks or long? So, yeah, it's definitely something that we're, that's the kind of free, like, no-cost labors that we were thinking about for future. So not available for this spring, but we'll look into it. Because I think we can do it. And most of those kids are turning, if they're not 18, they're turning 18. So that would be great. Want a motion?
Somebody make a motion?
Make a motion to add a line item to the DPW's budget in the amount of $25,000 for part-time seasonal labor and additional $20,000 for outsourcing of fertilizer to be discussed further by the finance subcommittee.
Second, some more.
Motion's been made and seconded. It really needs to go to Denise first.
As part of the process, we're still putting proposed budget.
She'll embed that.
So I'll put it in there.
The spirit of that into her proposed budget.
Okay, amended as Denise has said.
She said. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Good. All right. You had another one.
The other note I have is there was never any actual vote or finality on the addition of money for roads, which I think Joe had said 1.2 million that he wanted added. I think it was over two years.
Can I clarify that?
It's your.
So I had been asked for what is best to do to allocate, so that the DPW can make a two-year plan, knowing that they don't have to come back next year and fight through everything else that's getting put on capital. So I was just asking for suggestions. The recommendation is 600,000 per year. If we only feel comfortable with 600,000, we want to go through normal financing and just put it as part of the budget, then I would be okay with that. Or if it made sense to look at it as a 1.2 and stick it in with bonding of the school or other things. I just don't know enough of what is the best recommendation. But I feel that $100,000 was very deficient, given the state of our, you know, many of our roads. And if we don't catch up this year, next year, it's going to be worse, and we're going to be looking at a substantially bigger amount of money.
Well, the repair, leaving them in disrepair is going to cost us more money. It's just going to further erode.
No, we've got some people-
Bruce, do you have any recommendations?
Yes. We've got residents getting-
Get up here.
Come on, we just gave you 45,000.
So what, I guess the question is, the best way to do it.
The dollar.
The guy should have left for now.
That's probably first intermission already.
So my thought is to add to the capital budget, instead of the 100,000 that's budgeted in there now. Make it bigger and maybe make it the 1.2 and add it to bonding. But we need to see the capacity for our bonding.
Am I mistaken? I thought I heard this statement about bonding somewhere in the last year, that it's not a good practice to bond for a recurring expense, which I think is the spirit of what we want to.
But this is not, it's, a recurring expense would be doing the same road over and over. This is-
A recurring purpose.
It's, it's, a lot of communities bond for road improvements because it is a long-term, it's more the length of time that the improvement will last. And what, the roads are 20 years?
20 years if they're done right.
So if they're done right. And that's part of what we've had, is that we have roads that have not been done correctly, so they are deteriorating quickly. But it certainly would qualify for bonding.
My question would be, if we decide to bond 1.2, if we have that capacity, can you accomplish all that work in one year? Since, I mean, we're not talking until after July 1st.
It was intended to be over two.
Well, yeah, I would have-
Yeah, but you can't carry over.
Capital, you can.
A capital, but on a bond.
We already have our Chapter 90 list, are actually aboard at our board meeting tonight. Gordon, on the Chapter 90, it's three roads with the 580.
A portion of three roads.
Oh, that's terrible. Three roads.
Right, but if we do 1.2, how does that change that formula?
It's outsourced.
Well, we need to obviously separate these two items because they come from two different pots of money. So the Mass DOT has different specifications and parameters when it comes to Chapter 90. So with the other funding through bonding sources, we don't have to adhere to some of those requirements for Chapter 90. So I'm sure the road for Chapter 90 needs to be at least 500 feet long. If it's not 500 feet, it doesn't qualify. So we can do a lot more with a lot less, okay, as far as the money. I don't know if that answers your question.
I just want to make sure if we appropriate 1.2 million, whichever the funding source, work in that.
Yeah, and use the money.
Use the money as opposed to.
Yes.
Because they don't actually pay through those.
Yeah, some of us outsource.
If we put that all in the bid, we'd have no problem getting a contractor to bid on a contractor that's not at all.
So this is something we're going to contract out.
Oh, yeah, of course, yeah.
We don't have your coin to do that.
Yeah, right.
And they just add it to their schedule. Now, would we get a better price on getting the Chapter 90 money and?
Well, that's what we were talking about, so this, I can't.
I think we could, I think we could do it in the same bid. It would just sort of be an accounting paperwork, sort of quagmire that we could figure out. It would just, everything, all the bills would have to be coded. And we sort of did this with Palmer Paving last year because we had some other work that wasn't in the bid that we added. And it just gets coded differently. And I have to just make sure I'm with their accounting department. If you're on this road this day, make sure you don't add anything from this road because we need to have that separated out. Which is something that, like I said, we've done, we did last year a little bit, so.
You do get a better price. We used to do that. We piggybacked on the school parking lots. I believe Mountain View, we in Maple Shade, we did that. We piggybacked our bids for those areas on our Chapter 90 because here it's based on volume.
But they're separate funds.
But they're separate, but like you said, you get a better price, so.
Are we too late to get in the queue for like this fall? Are we too late to get in the queue for like this fall?
As far as.
For paving?
No, our bid's set to go out as soon as we know what our number is. We, obviously, we have a huge list of streets, and I think our goal was to kind of let you know that we have a significant backlog of work to the tune of, say, $15 million that we need to start getting on, because like you said, it's not, they're not going to get better by doing nothing.
Or cheaper.
Yeah, no, the backlog, if we don't, if we continue along our current funding trend, it'll be 20 million in five years. And that's, you know, just the reality of the situation, unfortunately. And in a year or two, Mass DOT may be changing our bid spec or pavement spec to super pave because that's their new thing, which is going to jump probably 15, 20 cents a ton. So our number that we get to do is going to go down. But like Bruce's point before, if we have funding that's not Chapter 90, we don't have to worry about getting reimbursed by the state, therefore, we don't have to worry about using their mixed design. So now we're back down to our regular 75 bucks a ton or whatever we got bid out of last year, so.
Cool.
If we do the, you know, the 1.2 million with the bonding, it's probably really going to cost us close, a little over 2 million over time?
Yeah, what do you trust there? When you cut down the yearly payments.
So suggestions on funding, I guess, I, I mean, I don't.
And I know we've come before you also as far as the complete streets and everything else, so we're, are looking at different funding sources also, through the feds and everything else for tip projects, so we're doing our due diligence on the outside also.
We started at a small discussion where we mentioned, you know, sometimes when you install infrastructures, i.e. sewer water, you have sort of a betterment for the people on that street. I mean, I know that sounds counterproductive, I guess, to, hey, I want my street paved because it's full of potholes. Okay, well, you can pay for it, that, that sort of doesn't sound like a great way to go. But the, I guess, yeah, the problem, it's hard to figure out where the money's going to come from. I mean, it would be nice if the state and/or the federal government realized that towns of a certain size are not getting enough money, they're just not.
Well, Kathy and I are going to, to see Governor Baker next week, right?
Yes.
And that can be certainly something that we talk about.
About that 1.1.
That's on the top of the list. But this is also a good, you know, topic for, he might not be so happy that he invited.
He's sorry.
So the funding sources are, I mean, I'm talking about bonding, but that's not the only option. We'll have to look to see how we do it, but that's, right off the top of my head, that's the, probably the most logical way to keep it.
So if we don't bond, and we try and put 600,000 into the capital, which is not even accounted for right now, because there's 100,000 in there, and you guys are trying to cut other areas, I, you know, that's not.
It's a mess.
Yeah, that's going to be a problem.
Well, it's, it doesn't change the problem that the finance committee will have after Denise's proposed budget to us, that is this big and we need to get it to be this big, so still have to look at making choices at some point.
But the total capital, I think, was, was it 700,000 this year and 1 million last year, or the opposite?
No, it's a million, I've got it.
Right, so this is, I mean, this is a substantial increase to that budget.
Well, it's not, though, because last year, we took some of the capital out of the current year's budget.
At the end of the fiscal year, when we had remainders in certain accounts that we could tick off, small projects.
So, for instance, as an example, police cars is under this year's capital, it was under last year's. We pulled it off last year's capital because there was some money from, I think it was the dispatch line. So, so it was paid for outside of the capital, but really, we still had.
But we're at least a month away from knowing what our capacity to wiggle things around is.
Yeah, yeah.
But that's, yeah, that's still a lot of money, 600,000.
Right, yeah, it sure is.
Well, that 600 would change the mill rate by 25 cents.
Correct.
If we did it that way, so we have to figure out how we want to do it. Do you want to bond, you know?
Yeah, that's, I mean, it's an important question, guys. I mean, people pay taxes and they have, you know, I mean, if you, I can't walk around my neighborhood without getting yelled at by the same person.
Try to go grocery shop.
I'm not kidding, I mean, I'm not kidding, I mean.
It is.
No, answer my phone for a little bit.
Yeah, East Circle and North Circle are bad, and they have, that's, has to be delayed because of.
Water main.
Right, but in the meantime, that street is bad. You know, so, you know, people pay the amount of taxes they do, and they're, you know, five, six, seven years away from their bad road even getting addressed because we keep pushing, pushing, pushing. And again, I said it before, I think that's one of the downsides of us being hyper-conservative last year. We didn't prove anything last year. So we lowered it, but, but now, now here we are this year, and it's, it's, no matter what we do, it's going to go up.
When is that water main going in?
Two years.
Two years.
Yeah, next year.
I forgot where it's on the capital improvement list.
But not soon.
Not soon enough, because like you said, we're already bonding about $2 million.
So this could, but this could potentially move other stuff up, stuff that's not even on the radar, that is bad condition, can potentially get moved up into, back to a normal maintenance cycle. I think we could accomplish a lot, so. It's definitely something to be considered, the question is just where does it all come from? Because it's getting overwhelming to keep like thinking how much, you know, we're adding this year.
But if, if it's the council's pleasure, I can certainly find a place to put it, and it's, it'll be in the proposed budget. Proposed budget, the way I see it, and please correct me if I'm wrong, is to do as conservatively as I can, absolutely, we've already, Sarah and I have already been cutting a lot of things, but they're not big dollar amounts. But to address the needs of the, of the town in as conservative as we can, and bring that to the council, and then the council has the next step.
Sounds like a plan.
So direction for Denise, by way of a motion?
600,000, 1.2 reference.
To you guys. I have my own, but whatever. Where's the economy of scale? I mean, when you go to the Palmer Paving and stuff, is it, is the magic number a million dollars? For 600, we're still going to get the economy where they're going to give us a good price?
I don't know what that, that threshold is.
That's kind of important.
I don't, I don't.
Yeah, I mean, depending, that number probably moves the, maybe a dollar or two a ton. I mean, I don't think, if you're talking about the mass pike, now you're talking about some money, but, you know, adding three more secondary roads in East Long Island Mass, I don't know that they're going to move that.
It all depends on the street, too, structures, I mean, there's a lot of.
Other things they have to look at, that they don't know until they look at it.
Crowny, if you need to put a crown on the road, there's, yeah.
Well, through the chair, this is not a vote anyways. I mean, so we can certainly direct Denise to put in 600,000 or 1.2 million for now for budget discussion.
Right.
And then we discuss it.
It's just some direction for a plan.
Make your best recommendation, if you feel it should be a one-time capital and stay in with 600,000, or if you feel like it is appropriate to bond, if you're going to bond it, I would suggest 1.2. It wouldn't make sense to add 600,000.
Right, right.
You know, let's take a bigger chunk out of it and bond it. So whatever the best recommendation is, and then we'll go from there.
Yeah, and then it comes to the committee, and then the committee comes to the council, and we all decide.
And then we vet it out during public hearing and stuff.
Good discussion, thank you.
Last one that I, just recalling, is relative to the Stormwater Enterprise Fund, you were going to put the, that.
Org chart.
Org chart.
Org chart and the duties and all of that. Bruce and I will be working on that.
Okay, anything else on direction items for our next meeting?
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hearing none, before we adjourn, just a reminder that we will, we have another council meeting scheduled for next Monday night, beginning at 5:00, Tom, or 6:00?
Well, that's up to you, you had mentioned 5:00 for the.
What else is, what else is penciled into that agenda, remind me?
It's only.
It's only budget.
It's only the proposed budget.
It's only budget, then we could probably do 6:00?
Okay.